Okay. Good afternoon. Good early evening. It is 5:00 PM. I'd like to welcome you to a City of Oak Harbor Council Workshop. Today is April 22nd, and as I mentioned, it's 5:00 PM. Welcome and thank you for your patience. This afternoon, we had a little technical difficulty, but I think it looks like we're up and running well now. Obviously, some challenges these days, but I am so proud of staff and the people that are -- that put these meetings together and our staff for their shared time to continue to deliver our services. I can't thank them enough, so I appreciate the staff. I also wanted to tell the citizens at this time that I certainly appreciate your -- the problems that I know you're having to deal with. We are here to help, even though our doors are closed, our phones are working. We are out in delivering the services, as I mentioned, and we want to try and help you however we can. I know our police and fire tell me that they are standing ready always, and please know that you can get help here at the City of Oak Harbor if and when you need it. Special concern, of course, to the last fortunate out there, and I know as we move forward, we obviously try to follow the President, the Governor, and Island County, especially the Island County Board of Health in the directions that they're going, and I suspect you all listened to the Governor yesterday talk about beginning to ease some of the stay home, stay healthy regulations. It'll be potentially a slow process. We'll try to keep you as informed as we possibly can about City Hall and how we will plan to reopen in the future, but know that it -- the concerns that are out there also are concerning amongst our staff and how we go forward. So, thanks for your patience. I think we have one of the most resilient areas in the country, and it's due to fine citizenship and fine people. So, thank you very much. So, back to our council workshop. We have, I believe, we have one missing counselor today. We did hear that Counselor Heisen will not be able to join us, but it looks to me like -- and in fact, I'd kind of like to go ask the council to say hello and make sure that your microphone is working this way. So, Counselor Servadius, are you out there?
We're here, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. I see you up there in the upper left-hand corner. I probably should have started on the lower right-hand side where Mayor Protim is. Mayor Protim, can you hear us?
Good evening. Yes, good evening, Mayor. Glad to be here.
And beside Mayor Protim is Counselor Mack. Can you hear us? Nope, nope. We can't hear you. We can't hear you. Okay. How's that? Yes, that worked. Great. Okay, sorry about that, Mayor. Counselor Mack is present. So, we'll go on up to Counselor Wassinger. Can you hear us?
Hi, I'm here. Thank you.
Hi, Counselor Wassinger. Welcome. Counselor Larson?
Good evening. Hello, everyone.
Hey, welcome. Okay. And I don't see Counselor Wiener yet. Am I right about that? Okay. We also have some staff. Looks like our city engineers down there in the lower right-hand corner. Jim, welcome. I see a box there. Okay. Jim quickly moved to the square next door. Above him is -- oh, there. And back, we have our police chief. Chief Dresker, okay. It looks like we have also Public Works Director Kathy Rosen, our City Finance Director Patricia Soul, and then we've got a couple of people from the Arts Commission that have joined us, and I think I'll let Blaine introduce them next here. And it looks like we have one of our -- one of the people that helps us with our rate work, Gene Corn -- or not Gene. Sean Corn. Too many Corns. Hi, Sean. Welcome. So, we'll move forward. We have an agenda. Looks like we've got an Arts Commission subject to start off with, a couple of things in engineering, and then finance will have the section here this evening, and City Administrator Report. So, I'd like to turn to the Community Partner Presentation and the Arts Commission. And so, Blaine, City Administrator?
Okay. You should have a presentation in your packet prepared by the Arts Commission. We have three representatives, it looks like, on the video here from the Arts Commission. We have Roderick Goggan, who's the Arts Commission Chair, and Therese Kingsbury, Arts Commissioner, and we have Cynthia Mason, Arts Commission Commissioner. I think I'm going to start with Roderick, and I think you're ready. You're more technically inclined, so I think you're ready to go and go ahead and put your presentation up there, and go ahead and let the council know what we have to do here regarding Arts Commission.
We should have tested him, make sure his microphone's working. Roderick, are you out there? Is he on mute?
Yeah, we don't hear you yet, Roderick.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
There you go.
There we go. Is everybody seeing the presentation?
We're seeing it at City Hall.
Yes, we can see. I can see it.
Yep.
Okay, great. I'm going to go ahead and get started then. So, we've just got a couple of subjects to talk about really quickly. The first is a revision of the Gary Oak Acorn Sculpture Project that was previously talked about and voted on. And then after that, discussion of a potential purchase of a sculpture entitled Tao. So, first, the revision of the Gary Oak Acorn Project. So, for a few reasons, a couple of reasons, and primarily because of the condition of the wood that's left there in the city yard. We would like to downsize that project from three acorns down to one. And that'll bring the proposed budget from around $30,000 down to about $15,000. That'll free up some of the creative arts funds for some other projects. Do you have any -- is there any questions about this? Or what -- I included an excerpt from the minutes of our February 13th meeting, and we had just discussed it and then voted unanimously to downsize this project. And then, yeah, and then to present it to the council for approval. Do you have any questions about this at all?
So, I can't see council now if they're -- Okay. Make sure there's not any questions. Maybe you can -- Okay.
Mayor?
Mayor Protim?
Yes, thank you. I was interested, where is this acorn sculpture going? And the other question is, are you sure you're going to have, whoever's doing it, a good -- it won't just fade and be waterlogged in a year? The outside coating to protect it?
Okay, so you're a little bit broken up coming across, but I believe you asked what the location was going to be. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes, so the location hasn't been determined yet. This -- and this project was approved. I can't remember the exact date. Blaine probably has it. But the RFP for the project hasn't even been written yet or drafted. And so, this is just a project that is on the shelf right now, waiting for us to have the wherewithal to move forward with it. So, location hasn't been picked yet. RFP hasn't been written, and so we don't have actual proposals for the artist to actually sculpt this yet. But one of the things that definitely will be making its way into the RFP will be that there is consideration for preservation, both in the beginning of the project and then periodically for maintenance as well.
And Roderick, just to clarify, the council approved it on May 7th, 2019, and two of the reasons why it didn't move forward was because of not having a location and tentatively going into the sculpture park, and we were focusing on the sculpture park. So, and that's kind of ties into the reason why it kind of made sense, because we didn't have locations to write it. Rather than trying to find a location for three areas just to downsize it to one sculpture instead of three.
Thanks, Blaine.
So, Counselor Muns, or I mean, Mayor Protim Muns, did that answer the question?
Yes, that was fine. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. So, do we have, I know there's been talk about this sculpture going indoors or outdoors. Do we -- Blaine, you just mentioned that we don't -- didn't have a location for three. Do we have a location for this one yet? Is the first question.
We do not have a location for this one. There was a question on the varnish, and we kind of talked about that last time. Certainly, that's part of the reason why we didn't do a, what's it, a cut? And there was some talk about doing a, what is it called, a slice or a -- trying to remember the technical term for it, out of there. And so, that definitely needs to go indoors. If this is varnished right, it should be able to be fine outside, but ideally, you putting them indoors would certainly increase it. But Therese and Roderick, you can kind of make sure I'm right, but I'm going by memory that if it is lacquered right, it should be able to be durable outside.
Yes, it's either that or, you know, and depending on the artist that puts it together, if their opinion is more of that it should be under some type of structure, then we take that under advisement as well. But it could still, it could be outdoors with some type of structure over it even, just to protect it minimally from the water elements as well.
So, I mean, I can support this. My question, I guess my hope would be, I'd probably favor an indoor location so this lasts for decades, if not longer. Anything in this climate that goes outdoors can be very, you know, can deteriorate fairly quickly. So, I would support it. The other question is not necessarily, maybe the Arts Commission can chime in, but the condition of the wood has deteriorated significantly. My question there, is there something we can be doing more as a city to protect that wood up at Public Works or we should be doing to protect that wood? Or is that just the nature of that oak that's up there?
One of the things they did do was put it into a shed, but this was cut down in, I believe, 2014. So, ideally, these projects should have happened a lot sooner on them. So, we're confident with enough wood there. They should be able to get one out of this, one good acorn out of it, but we'll continue to work with it.
So, I'm familiar with the shed and the oak. I was there the day it was cut down. My question is, is there something we should be doing as a city? Roderick, when you or your team or whoever examined this wood, is it naturally deteriorating? Or is it being exposed to the elements up there that's unduly accelerating its decay?
Sure. It's, I mean, it's certainly not under perfect conditions. It's not in a climate-controlled area. It's just under some cover, so it's still minimally exposed to the elements. It's not being precipitated on directly, but it's still in the open air and hasn't been treated whatsoever.
So, I guess I'll just end with, I will support this, whether it's, and I know it's not necessarily the Arts Commission, but Kathy, if you and your team, or if there's anything we can do as a city, one, maybe to expedite the use of that wood. I know we've talked about a large table for the interpretive center, and I know the interpretive center is going to come up later with the utility rates. Still, we can make a table, but I'd like to do anything we can to preserve that wood. And I don't know what that means, if it means getting a little more protection around it or something like that. I know there's people out there, Brad Gluth and others, that work with wood that are a lot smarter than myself, but I would just like us as a city to do everything we can to protect what's left of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions from council?
Counselor Mack has some concerns.
Great. Counselor Mack?
Couple different concerns and a couple of questions. First concern is, being a woodworker for many years, I adamantly agree with Councilman Servadius. I'm not sure what partially exposed to the elements means. It sounds like it's not being rained on, but I could be wrong, but I do believe that somewhere, the City of Oak Harbor has some type of covered shop building where a partial of some of this wood, trimmings or cuts, however you want to call it, could be stored until certain artists are scheduled to take place on this. If we're going to do this and spend this kind of money, we need some quality material to work with. And then second is, I'm concerned with Councilman Servadius' well comment is, this needs to last a while for the next generation and possibly after that. So, I would also be inclined to, even if we have to make some kind of heavy plexiglass shell over this to keep it protected so it does last, you know, 20, 30 years and that type of thing. The last question I have is, is this artist, when we put out these RFQs, is this RFQs, is this going to be concentrated to someone on the island or in our geographical area? Or are we going to put these RFQs out statewide? So, that would be a question for the Arts Department there. So, other than that, that's my concerns and question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, Roderick, you want me to take those two questions? I think I can handle them.
Sure, go ahead, Blaine.
Okay. The first question there is the, they're stored out of the Public Works Shop, and I think we have our Public Works Director Kathy. Can you kind of speak to that and the availability of other locations? And I think you can also speak to the issue of the tables and those kind of issues too. So, you can go ahead and speak to those questions.
Our covered storage, our bays are full. We need them for our equipment and supplies. So, we don't really have any space here at the shop in any of our bays. I don't know if there's room, perhaps in a storage unit at the marina. We have not pursued that. And then with regard to what we were considering with some of the wood for the interpretive center was maybe a desk for the entry, maybe some small tables and seating for the toddler area, some podium, a podium or two, those kinds of things is what we were considering. We had originally talked about a large conference table, but the group that's working on the interpretive center has talked about maybe going with a different model and like they have down at Lot, where they have smaller tables that can seat more people for like classroom activities.
All right, thank you. And then to answer the second question regarding local artist, I think given the logistical issues of having to do a lot of it and it being located here and the size that it is, probably is unlikely that we're going to get somebody that's off-island. I think there's quite a lot of interest on-island, and I think Therese can probably speak a little bit more to that issue. Therese Kingsbury? Or Roderick? We can't hear you, Therese.
We've actually interviewed three island artists, and they're very well-known wood carvers. And I've also talked to regionally in Ball City, a couple of other artists that are interested. So, there's plenty of people with the talent to do it, but I really would like to keep it on the island. And we have had one gentleman who is pretty famous, joined us at an Arts Commission meeting, and he was actually commissioned to change the tree into something on the postal property, and that didn't follow through with him. So, he's interested. His cousin isn't interested, and they were interested in teaming up together. So, if we didn't work with them, they've both been posed with the outdoor maintenance, and they've assured us that they're capable of doing this. The piece that is best suited for the acorn, the largest piece of wood, they believe they're going to have to get in pretty deep to get one, and they would probably have to work at the corporation yard with their chainsaws to make that art happen, because moving it didn't really look like it was what they wanted to do. So, we've been pursuing it, but we haven't finalized anything.
Okay, does that answer your questions, Counselor Mack, for the time being at least?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. I understand now. Again, I'm just concerned that, let's look at some space, and if it's not going to get carved on immediately, let's see where we need to possibly store this, whether it's the marina or somewhere else to save it for whatever future purposes we all decide to do with it. But again, thank you, Teresa, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other council input at this point before we go to the other, the purchase question? Oh, Counselor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. One sidebar thought. I know at one point we looked at that, it was a marine, it's off of, is it Oak Harbor Road? That, there's a large building that's now for sale. Off of Oak Harbor Road, it was, I don't want to say it's a Marine Services, a Marine Tech Center where they had boat molds, and they had big, large boat molds in there. I'm just curious, if we got creative, if we might be able to pay them? I don't see that property selling anytime soon, if it would be possible to pay them a minimal lease to be able to store that lumber over there. That would keep it completely out of the environment, because that's a very large building. And I don't know what it would take to move it over there. But that's just a building that I thought of in town that's been for sale for quite some time, that's sitting there and might be a win-win to preserve this wood and get that owner of that property a couple of bucks in their hands in terms of the lease. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that idea. Thank you. So, we'll take that under advisement. Any other input or questions at this point? Okay. The purchase of the two sculptures.
Let's go on to the Tao.
Tao?
Let's go on to the Tao.
Okay. Do you want Roderick to do that?
Yeah, Roderick could go ahead and continue with the Tao. Go ahead, Roderick.
If you're talking, we can't hear you.
All right. So, the Tao, and we'll look at pictures here in just a minute. Purchase price is $7,000 and installation estimate is $500. Again, this was a motion brought up on February 13th that was voted up, voted for unanimously. And I'll go ahead and show you the pictures. So, this is a two-piece set. These are about three feet high. And one of the proposed locations we had for this was the trailhead at Scenic Heights. Therese, do you want to speak a little bit about these pieces and the artist?
So, Verena Schwippert's the artist. She lives in Arlington. She has a lot of art around the state of Washington. And these, I was actually at her house for another reason. These came up. They're very, they're granite. They're touchable. They're indestructible, and they're very native. And being at the top of the marsh would be perfect, a perfect location. There is a park, a location in the park that would also be good for that, but we haven't made any decisions about art in the park. We did, this is the third time we've unanimously voted on these pieces, and it's been about almost two years. And we have presented these to City Council before. So, I don't know if you remember seeing them in another presentation, but we've talked about these before. And they have been around the state in different locations, and she has agreed to that price based on what would happen if she had them in a gallery for us. So, they're definitely going to be an asset.
Okay, so council, questions or input?
Councilman Mack has a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Mack.
Teresa, we mentioned, I think they look cool. Yes, I do believe it's a great asset, and they're really showy. My concern is that you had an option, or number one option would be up at Scenic Heights. Any other options like number two or three? I really liked the oak leaf design on Highway 20 once it was complete. I don't know if this was considered when that, there's that little platform on Highway 20 adjacent from Harbor Station. We're out in front of Office Max. In other words, when you got something showy, and we're going to spend some money, and we got the other piece down the road, that's a good location on Scenic Heights, but I think it's limited. I'd like to see a little bit more tourists coming into town, see this type of thing, let them know that, you know, we've got, we've got some cool things happening. So, that's my concern is, again, I like the art. I'm just concerned, let's be careful on the location, or let's get some more options. Give council some different, maybe location two or three. We've got some cool stuff downtown, but again, let's get it where we can, we can all see it in our tours and people visiting and where we can see it and enjoy it every day. Thank you.
If I could, one of the ideal locations for it, that we can't really place it because we haven't come to the discussion of placement of art in Windjammer Park. And in the park, there is a location near a long concrete bench next to a flagpole near the area where the water collects and all the grasses are, and they found some native baskets there. That would be great for the interpretive trails and tours that we're going to give to people in our park, but we're not ready to make a decision to put art in the park. We were thinking we could put them at the Scenic Heights location. They are moved with straps and cranes, and it's not complicated. They're going to be pinned, and they weigh, probably weigh 1,200 pounds apiece, so nobody's going to lift them and take them away. Ideally, they would be in Windjammer Park or a more noticeable location, but this is a designated spot that's already been agreed upon to have art. So, we just wanted to go ahead and start the process, and if during the process, we can start the conversation about getting them someplace else, that would be great. I kind of feel like they could be really enjoyed if they were in a better spot, but this is a designated spot for art, and it is above the marsh, and it does have that native indigenous feel to it, so.
Okay, I understand. That makes sense. So, I'd be, I could support that if the moving costs aren't too exorbitant with that type of thing and possibly the Phase 2 of the park or however we want to do that. But as long as it's not a permanent thing, and we can get them more visible down the road, I understand completely.
Thank you, Counselor Mack.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm biased. I walk by the Scenic Heights Trailhead often, so I'm okay with them going there. And I too would support this. I'm curious, has this been before, in front of the council before, or is this the first time we're seeing this one?
This is the first time. I think Therese, we talked about this a lot on the report at the Arts Commission, and I probably had it on some of my reports, so it's kind of been out there publicly, but this is the first time we have brought it to council.
Okay, no, I would support this one. She said we'd voted on it three times. I thought we turned them down or something.
No, they voted on it at -- No, they voted on it at the Arts Commission three times, so they were looking at, if you look at the motion, it's kind of complicated, because they were looking at a partnership issue, so they, they were trying to get another identity to pay for half of it, but that didn't materialize, and so they came back, and finally with the last motion, they just really wanted to move forward with it. So we're just using all Arts Commission money to finance it in this proposal, so now we're bringing this final proposal. So that was part of the reason why I didn't bring it forward in the past, is because we were still tying down the tentative money on it, but now we've had the tentative money. We had some hesitance with, with the location, because we were holding off on placing art in Windjammer yet, and including that into the design plan. We've kind of got a good alternative here with the Scenic Heights location, and they kind of wanted to move forward with it. So I think we, we kind of, after kind of vetting it a while, I think we've got a good proposal to move forward now, so now we're bringing it to the council.
Noted. Thank you.
I don't blame you, Counselor Servadias. I wondered, I figured if it had been before council, I might have seen it before too, and I hadn't either, so good question. Any other counselors' questions, any from council? Mayor Protem?
Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you. I want the Art Commission to hold off on, one, the Interpreter Center is still working on things, and of the exhibits in there may be placed outside, but is a park, it's not supposed to be a sculpture park. I mean, when you see the kids running around, and people walking their dogs, and be, you know, leaving the court, and someone having to run after it, I clutter up our park till we have things we want in there, the new bridge, if there's another pavilion, that they're, they're in there, additional restrooms or whatever, start cluttering it. I mean, I, I'm an art, I don't want to lose our pure lawn round space for families and kids and visitors. I'm going to hold off saying it's going to eventually be in Windjammer Park. I would want to be sure if it's at the trailhead, that someone over a car and knock these over and roll them down the hill, because that would be a lot to roll them down into the marsh. So I just want to, it's, it's visible, and a lot of people use it, but it's not as visible as on somewhere. So it may not be a bad idea to possibly think another location just as a backup, but I really want to, all I can think of is cluttering up the park. We need to, we have in there what we need to have, and to preserve the openness, some of the beauty, the best beauty of a park is the open. So that's my two cents worth for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other input or questions at this time? Okay, seeing none. I appreciate that. We will thank you to those that have joined us there from the Arts Commission. We appreciate your time and effort. I know it's a continual, a lot of time that you put into these meetings and so forth. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and then Mayor, just, just to kind of wrap it up.
Okay.
So now that we got the input from the council, we'll go ahead and move this to an action item on, I'm not sure exactly what council meeting it will, but it'll come forward at a subsequent council meeting for approval.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you again. We will then move on to our next item, under engineering, a proposed KBA Inc. contract to set up contract management system for the engineering division. So is this Director Kathy Rosen, or, oh, okay. Looks like our city engineer, Jim Bridges. Hey, Jim.
Hi, thanks, Mayor, thanks, council. So this is a proposal that we're seeking approval for, not at this meeting, but to vet it for the first time. We would like to bring forth a contract with KBA to provide services to the engineering division, to help us set up a good, working contract management system. And I haven't discussed fee yet with KBA, but we are looking at about a two-day-a-week effort for this. I feel that's appropriate. I didn't put together a slideshow for it, but I've identified the services I think are appropriate at this time. The first one was to be assess the staff knowledge of construction management practices and systems. And I'll be straight up and honest with you, you know, as engineers in my division, you know, we all bring our own separate experiences, and so my experience with construction management are somewhat different than Alex's, and are somewhat different than Jack Smith's, and Brad Gluth, and Brett Arvidson. And, and so we typically, we kind of meld them together, right, and come up with a one-off type system. It's not the most efficient system, but it gets the job done, but I would like to see us take that next step, and come up with a uniform system that we can put into practice, and that helps us get our, takes our projects from start to finish, make them bulletproof as far as, you know, any potential audit type of, type of situation. So again, the first one would be assess all of our individual knowledges and experiences with, with construction management practices and systems. Next one would be assess our current filing and archiving practices, to make sure that, you know, that when KBA does this, they can, they can see what's good, what we're doing wrong, what we're, you know, we're doing right. Assess our current project accounting system in Eden. I know that KBA is familiar with it, with our project accounting system, and we're certainly going to follow that, that program. Next one is the project development and scheduling. Item five would be tracking project deliverables, submittals, change orders, and just good documentation practices. Six is preparation of pay estimates and submissions to, to accounts payable, so that we're getting our submissions, we're reviewing them, we're getting into accounts payable on time, make sure our bills are paid, and our contractors are paid. Then we've got, takes us to, through project closeout and acceptance, and that's typically the, the piece that kind of drags along towards the end. You know, you're scrambling to find documents, you're scrambling to find the things that are necessary to your funding agencies, and that's, that's never a good thing. And then the last one would be project archival. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions out there from city council? Counselor Mack?
Yes, this would be a question for Jim. Jim, so you have no, no estimated cost yet for like these two days a week, possibly, you know, 20 hours a month, that type of thing?
That's correct. I would, well, two days a week, those would be full days, so those would be, you know, 16 hours a week, eight-hour days. So, you know, I'm thinking, you know, maybe a three-month effort in this, somewhere in the neighborhood between, I don't know what KBA, KBA's rates are, but somewhere in the neighborhood between, I'd say 18 and to $32,000 would be the effort, would be my estimate at this point in time.
So is this a one-time deal, or are we just keep, okay, so it's just basically, someone would be coming in and setting us all up to get on some type of a system?
Yes, training, training us.
Okay.
Right, yes.
So, so let me ask you this. I mean, I can support this type of thing. I think it's a good idea, having, you know, different people in the departments, and yes, everybody has different approaches, and they could be all good approaches. So how do you see this to expedite and facilitate these projects? Is it going to help? Is it going to, by changing things, or is it going to hinder us?
Oh, no, it'll definitely help. If, if it was a hindrance, I, you know, I would bring those, those items forward, and I think what we're, what we're, obviously we're lacking is, you know, that, those first few items, you know, what is our combined knowledge, what is our combined experience in construction management, what type of systems are we all used to? And so, you know, that's what we're looking to overcome, right, to streamline this process.
Okay, okay, I understand, and I think it'd be a good, provided we keep the costs under control. We're not going to know what kind of dollars we have in here as we exit out of this type of thing, but I would like to move forward and examine it a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Any other counsel? Counselor Servadias?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll echo Councilmember Mack's, you know, I support the concept, it's hard to know without a dollar amount, but you guys also have a budget, and I'm assuming you'll find a way to make it fit in your budget. Do you anticipate, besides just systems then, there's some technology or software solutions in here, Mr. Bridges?
There may be, there may be. I'm not sure if we have access to like Microsoft Project on our system. You know, that's just coming off the top of my head. Typically, you know, it's a, it's a scheduling program. I don't know what's out there. Again, you know, we would rely on KBA's experience, you know, they are in that, that construction management business is one of their main functions, and so we were looking, looking to them to help us, you know, take advantage of technology, what's out there. You know, if it's reasonable, if it's our needs, I don't want to buy, you know, primavera, primavera scheduling software is hugely expensive. You know, Microsoft Project can, you know, I would assume would handle anything that we need. But, and then the, I think the more important functions at the time would, you know, once we figure that part out, would be, it's really is, is, you know, our, our documentation, and our documentation tracking, and our documentation archival process. Those are, those are huge, because, you know, if I've got one person out of the office, who knows where the archives is, that doesn't help us, right? We're struggling. So something that we can all access when we get that phone call, or when we start a project, and that person's on vacation, when we start a project, and we can access it, and, you know, and continue to move forward instead of waiting additional time for that one person to come back to, to help us find things.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I look forward to hearing more. You know, I'm a fan of taking our human capital, leveraging that with technology, and I appreciate you guys not just sitting there. I never liked the answer of, let's just do it this way, because we've always been doing it, because a lot of times that's not the best way to do it. So looking for new solutions and creative solutions is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And my, my staff is open to this as well, so, you know, this isn't just an idea that, you know, I dreamed up, you know, it's something that, you know, Kathy and Brett have helped me, you know, we've talked about this, the need for it going forward, you know, in my staff meetings, we've talked about it, and we all think it's a great idea, so. And I apologize for not having numbers at this point in time. Again, this is, this is just to get the concept in front of the council, to come back at a later date with, with the proposal, so.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bridges, this sounds great. One of complaints we get a lot of them, how slow it takes for any project to get through Oak Harbor. Never taken a project through there or another city, but coming back to us, and to be sure we don't lose any documents that we can streamline, if we could get some technology that would help things. But I think we need to also be very careful, because we don't know what our revenues are. I'll suss this out with our finance director, because I don't want to have to hopefully lay anybody off during this time.
Your points are well taken.
We are going to be struggling. I have gone through this before, way back in '09, '10, '11, I mean, anyway, years where we lost 18% revenue every single year. And people do, they, they learned how to do a second job, and there was no extra money to pay them. It sounds great, I love the idea, but we just need to be sure with finance, please.
Again, I agree with your points, and they're, they're very well taken, and I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, again, I also like conceptually where this is coming from. Anytime we can look at our processes and make those more efficient, we can also increase our customer service. We're also looking at, you know, when you're talking about filing and archiving practices, that's a safeguard for the city, making sure that we're doing these things in accordance with the ever-shifting rules and regulations for that. I wanted to say also, I like where this is coming from. This is one of the things where our city staff, you guys weren't asked, hey, what's wrong? You're looking at your processes and saying, you know what, we think that there's, there's some room for improvement here, we can put out a better product, we can take some outside input and see if the, the services that we provide and the way that we provide them can be streamlined, and that's, that's a win-win for everyone. I like the fact that you guys continue to look at how you do things and look to improve that. So obviously, you know, the other concerns that were brought up, you know, financially, we don't know what this costs, but it's early in the process. I understand you're looking at the concept and the, and getting a warm fuzzy for whether or not we'd like to look forward, move forward with that. And I do like the concept, and I just wanted to say I like where it's coming from as well. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Larson. Counselor Wassinger?
I'm mute myself. Okay, and I agree with everything that's been said. I just want to clear up, and this is for city projects, correct? So this would be like a, would this include our streets projects, any water sewer projects, projects like that? Is that correct?
But it actually, you use it for any and all projects, right? So, you know, typically, in my, my experience, the other departments come, and they look towards the engineering department to help them with a contract as well, right, and some contract management. And so it can span all divisions, you know, to keep a project, you know, in-house and moving forward, and properly documented and archived and completed, so.
Okay. And then also, I too, and, you know, I too echo Mayor Protem's concerns that I am cautious going into the next, you know, the rest of the year into next year on what our finances are going to look like, and how financially we're going to come out of this time. And, you know, I'd hate to enter into a contract and then have to choose. It might, yeah, so I echo those concerns too, and I look forward to hearing how, getting updates from Patricia and knowing how that goes forward. But I agree, I think it's a great idea, and I support it, as long as it's just a responsible time to do it. But yes, I think it's a great idea, and support it, so thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wassinger. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to item number B, proposed KBA Inc. PSA for Clean Water Facility Construction Closeout.
Mayor, before we go on, I had some surgery yesterday, and so if you don't mind, I'm going to log off for the rest of the evening, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item, next item, even though Jim's name is on it, I assume Kathy, Kathy Rosen, our Public Works Director?
Mayor Brett Arvidson is going to present this.
Oh, great, okay. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and try to, would you, at least, would you give me the share You see that? I know, I.
Pull it, hit the green button on the bottom.
I did, so let me check.
Pull in.
Oh, here we go. You see that? We're going somewhere. Yep.
You're there, see if you can maximize that.
Yeah, I shall, just a second here. Hang on this one moment.
Is it F5? F5?
I'm hitting it right now. Well, it's not working.
She can, you can't eat two? Isn't it view report?
Can you see it now?
Yeah, we just, it's better if we see the whole screen. Okay, I think we got it.
Okay.
Is that better?
Okay, this is building on what Jim talked about, and as, this is actually continuing KBA's services related to the Clean Water Facility, and part of our discussion was trying to not only finish the Clean Water Facility, but also incorporate our, her knowledge. You know, we have a lot of experience now, and starting off, we have a lot more systems and knowledge, so we want to make sure that gets institutionalized, and that's part of the previous conversation was talked about. As you're aware, KBA has been working with the city for, since 2015 on the Clean Water Facility. They provided valuable assistance to us, and with both the financial accounting system, we built a lot of our We built a lot of our systems from scratch and construct administration for the project. Active construction management is pretty much complete. We just processed, we hope is the final Hoffman invoice for the project. But we're still in the contract closeout and this stuff is oftentimes takes a while to do for various reasons. We'd like to continue, even though we're finished with active construction management, we want to continue KBA's knowledge of the project history and our documentation. We have tetra bytes of project files that we have to keep track of until we get to the final contract approval and final funding activities. We last amended KBA's contract with the council in June of 2019. And that anticipated our services going through March of this year, March of 2020, where we are now. At that time, we indicated that we were, wanted to see where we were with the contract and whether we wanted to proceed any further with it or close it out. At this point, we prefer to keep going for a while longer. Their detailed knowledge of our project financials and administration, you have to think we have over 100 subcontractors in this project. They'll be assisting us with the finalization of the project, which in our world is oftentimes has a lot of ins and outs to it. We have a variety of contract closeout documents, both from the funding sources and just internal documents. We have to do audits. We have a major issue with contractor closeouts and the retainees release process. And we have 100 subcontractors until all of them have got their liens released, got their labor, you know, cleared with Labor and Industries and cleared with taxation. We can't do that. And it's like herding cats because they just want their money and they have to get all the paperwork done. Then we actually get to the point where we have all that done, then we have a legal process to go through. We have one potential legal activity outstanding on the project and we may need their help with that. Hopefully that'll go away. As I said, we have our very complex contract, our GCCM agreement, essential permits. And we want people that are, know the ins and outs of it because it's been quite a complex process. Right now, we don't anticipate full time with that. We have two key project staff we want to keep moving, keep available to us. One is Chris Bailey, who's our project accounting, and Kay Adams, who's the project principal. I see them kind of going on mostly through the summer, but we'd like to keep them available through the remainder of 2020. So our intended action is to present the, the KBA contract for council approval at the May 5 meeting. This will be called, we call on-call contract. It will be new contract. So we use them as we need them. The, I said, the contract term will be extended through the remainder of 2020. I've had some initial conversations with them a couple of months ago. We were talking about 57,000. But actually I had also included some tasks that Jim was talking about earlier. So that number for the Clean Water Facility might be, it was probably going to be lower than that. But I also started talking about some of the training activities. Like I said, we have a lot of harder knowledge that we want to institutionalize from this project. That, any questions? And I'll get, try to get myself off the screen here.
So that concludes Proposed KBA. And now we'll go to questions. Counsel, Councilor Servadias?
Brett, you, well, I guess I'll start a little more 30,000 foot level. So we flipped the switch on this plant November of 2018?
That's affirmative.
So two years to close it out. Is that normal? It seems like a long time.
Well, you have to remember, we flipped the switch on the, on liquid side, November of 2018. We actually didn't finish active construct, or the major construction until summer when we opened up the park. So wow, all through 2018, 2019, we were in active construction and, and we were still doing parts of the plant, like the solids building at that point. So really, we didn't finish active construction and start on the punch list till September of 2019, which is about six months ago. So on a project of this magnitude, that's pretty typical. Actually, it's actually been, actually the, from, from last summer to now, it's actually gotten smoother than I thought it would. So. But yeah, that's, that's pretty typical. And we don't do the actual paperwork closeout until we have everything complete.
And so you mentioned that you had just, I think your words were we just processed Hoffman's final invoice? Does that mean Hoffman's off the hook or what is Hoffman's obligation still at this point?
No, they're still under contract and have not received final payment because final payment needs to be actually approved by council. So when we go through all this contract closeout, get all the information, all the liens clear, all the taxes clear. You know, and get all the sign offs on it, then we present a final contract to the council for approval. And that is their final payment. What I, I'm talking about is I process monthly payments. This is the last monthly payment till we do the final.
Okay. And then in closing, I appreciate, this is just a summary introduction. I'm assuming the agenda bill will have much more detailed deliverables that we expect from KBA?
Yes, it will.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Servadias. Any other questions? Councilor Mack?
Yes, Brett, thank you for all your effort. I imagine the paperwork and the complex is pretty in-depth. Now, I wasn't part of this last two to four years, but I kind of with Council Servadias on this. It's taken a while, but again, it's a complex system and everything. So on-call for the 57,000. Now, again, I'm concerned about city finances coming out of this and I'll have more questions on some dollars later on. But since this is on-call and we're kind of maybe a little budget, is there any way that your staff can sort of budget out a little bit better based on how much more training you're going to need and the different questions that you're going to need to talk to Hoffman about for the remainder of the year? So we've got about, you know, nine months left, that type of thing, to sort of keep this at a reasonable amount and it doesn't get out of hand based on if we need to call them or if we get heavy fall rains or something like that. So again, I'm just concerned about that dollar amount getting away from us between now and the close of 2020. So thank you for your time on that, Brett.
Yes, and I, we've kept, that's, we've tried to keep our consultant contracts in this project very tight, very short timeframes and very specific to scope. And, you know, frankly, KBA's been very efficient for us. But I share your concern and it's one of those things that we're hoping to get it done and get it done quickly. It's not something I want to linger or have people blowing on us. And like I say, KBA's been good at stretching their budgets a long ways.
Any other? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Brett, you skipped over it. You may not be able to. There was, is there a legal claim against us in closing out that we haven't heard about or something?
I don't want to go into detail. This is something probably for executive session, but we have one vendor that's still outstanding. We have not received any formal information, but our harsh of dryer guys are not happy. And like I say, it's not something, I, I, I think it is something we should reserve for, for the next executive session if it comes to something we have to worry about. Hoffman is, right now it's in Hoffman's hands and it's, it's a Hoffman issue, but it may have, it may extend to closeout.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I appreciate, thank you very much.
So I had the same question there and I, I'm glad that it got asked and we'll get more information on that moving forward, it sounds like. Any other questions? Okay, doesn't look like it at this point. Thank you very much, Brett, and your continuing efforts there. We'll move on now to item A under Finance, Utility Rate Analysis Discussion Continued. And I know that Sean, I'm sorry, is Sean still with us? Yes, he is. Sorry, I called you your dad and uncle's name before, earlier. So it's nice to have you here. And then it looks like Patricia, our Finance Director?
Patricia?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We just brought back what we have provided, we provided at the March 25 meeting, the three options. It would be helpful probably, Sean, if you just went through those three options with them. And then at that point, we can take further questions and maybe have the ability to explore any options they would like to pursue.
Sure, I can do that. Thank you, Patricia. Mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to chat with you tonight. I'll share my screen quick. I'm actually starting on page 33 of the Packet Committee tonight as part of that. And so this, this is slide six of the presentation from the last meeting. And we developed three different options and these were developed for each of the utilities. And so on the water side, water utility side, we, the first option was the revised CIP. And so we pushed out some of the capital projects. We eliminated some of the capital projects. And I've got more detail a little bit later if we want to look at that. Option two is the same as option one with the additional removal of water's allocation and funding of the interpretive center. And then option three is the same as option one, but with no change in rates for 2020. So no change in rates in this current calendar year. For storm drain, very similar, revised capital plan. We stretched out some capital and pushed out some capital. We also, under storm drain, we reduced reserve targets to 20% of revenue. That was previously 25% of revenue. Option two is the same as option one, but again, with storm drains contribution to the interpretive center removed. And then option three was no change in rates for 2020 and the same updates as option one. On page 34 of your packet, we have the solid waste and wastewater options. Option one for solid waste, no change in CIP. There is no real CIP. That is all included in the operations budget for new cans, carts, et cetera, for the solid waste utility. But we did also reduce that reserve target down to 20% of revenue from the current approach of 25%. And again, very similar to the stormwater side, both of those utilities have very good revenue stability. And so these are ones we felt like we had some room to move that down to a more reasonable level. Option two is the same as option one with the removal of solid waste interpretive center contribution. And option three is option one plus no change in rates for 2020. On wastewater, we had no changes in CIP. The primary CIP are items that are on, you know, finishing up at the Clean Water Facility and then some other minor items. But there was no major capital improvements or changes included. Option two, remove the interpretive center and wastewater's component of that from the wastewater analysis. And option three was no change in rates for 2020. So as we went through this, I'm going to skip down a few slides down. And so slide, page 38 of your packet has, 38 has the water detail of that. And so what you can see as we go through, I'm going to jump to the summary table here at the bottom. But each of those utilities has their scenarios laid, laid out as part of that. And what those changes were. And I was going to go to the combined. So page 55 of your packet. Then this is the, the total change in the bills. This base case, what I didn't describe, that is the previously presented rate study update that we did earlier this year, I believe, in January, if I remember correctly, as part of that. So that has not changed. And then you can see the different changes in the water bill, the wastewater bill, the storm drain bill and the solid waste bill. And at the bottom of this slide, then there's the, the total change for each of the scenarios as part of this. So one thing to note as we went through this for water, under option one and option two, we were able to, with the movement of capital outside of the plant, outside of this current timeframe we're looking at, and in some cases elimination of capital, then we did not need to raise rates in 2021, 2020, 2021. And then we had some minor increases in 22 through 24. Wastewater, there are no real changes except for scenario two or option two, where it does reduce a little bit, where we're able to move or eliminate the interpretive center. Option three, you see in the top right-hand corner of this page, you see a fairly big spike. That's if we do nothing in 2020, we still have all that debt service and operational costs that need to be funded. And so we have to play a little bit of catch-up. So we have a large increase in the sewer rates if we do nothing in this year. And then that gets reduced in the out year from the other scenarios. Storm drain stayed relatively similar, but with the movement in the capital and option one and option two, then we're able to bring those down to fairly minimal adjustments. You can see around 30 cents a month per year for both option one and two. And solid waste stayed relatively the same for all scenarios, but you do see a spike in option three where we delay a rate adjustment as part of that.
Sean, can I just clarify? It's per month, right? Not per year?
Sorry, per month. Yes, thank you, Patricia. Sorry. So then you can see down at the bottom, the total change in the bill per month based on our average customer. And you can see the base case and then each of those options going across with those assumptions in capital deferral or elimination as well as the interpretive center and then a delay in any rate adjustment in 2020. And then here was the, on page 56 of the packet, was the summary of the average single-family total bill. So this is the combination of each of those options and you can see how that adjusts on an annual basis as, as we go, a monthly basis for each of the years that we're looking at for 2020 through 2024. And then as a percentage change on page 57, you see the big orange spike in 2021. That's option three. If we do nothing, then we need a fairly significant increase in the overall percentage change in that total bill in order to catch up and make sure that we're able to fund our current and projected operating capital needs. And with that, I can turn it back over for any, Patricia, anything else from you or?
No, I think we just need to get some questions and guidance from council.
Okay, so we will open it up for questions or input from the council at this time. Councilor Mack?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Question for Patricia. Patricia, I am leaning, looking at this, picking it up where we were last time. Had six different questions. Those questions were answered. However, some of the answers, in my opinion, were incomplete. So I need a little bit of clarification before I can really support the particular option that I'm after. So one question that needs to be complete is on the proposed projects going forward. There's, the projects are proposed, but I need dollars. So what I'm looking for is to help me make a decision. but I need dollars. So what I'm looking for is to help me make a decision here, is each project broken down, I would like to know the estimated costs or expenses on the city's part and I would like to know the estimated revenues, what the city hopes to obtain, both on our projects moving forward on the right hand, in addition to, as close as we can get to where we're at with the Navy. What are our estimated costs to get the Navy onboard with us? What are our estimated revenues? Once I get those dollars, everything else on these different services have dollars, but yet, well, I'm not seeing any dollars in front of me on these two major issues and I'm supposed to make a decision. So if I could get some information back on that, it sure would be appreciated and it would help me make a more informed decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Mack, I can actually share, I sent a spreadsheet that showed the CIP changes, so I will share that screen right now.
Okay.
Hold on. All right, here it comes. Can you all see my screen?
Not me.
Okay, hold on. There we go. Can see it now?
You need to blow that up a little bit.
Yep. Little bit too much, let me go back. Okay, can you guys see it? All right, so for storm drain, we moved the convert wellsite 10 to detention pond. The cost that we had projected for 2021 and 2022 to 2025 and 2026. And the costs estimated are $75,000 in 2025 and $250,000 in 2026 for a total cost of $325,000. This is included on the CIP for the city. It's also on the budgeted long-range capital or the long-range capital plan. It had not been budgeted, it was projected to be budgeted in 2021.
Okay, thank you Patricia. I must be, well, I understand.
Okay.
I'm, I evidently, I'm doing something wrong here, but I'm not making myself clear. I'm looking for new projects that the information that Steve Powers gave to us. Okay, and so far I haven't seen that and I understand, I've got that information, but I'm looking for all these proposed projects. Some of them may get off, some of them may not get off the ground. Those are the numbers that I'm looking for. If they were to go through, we don't know when or if, but if they were to all come to fruition, what would the dollars be?
And I think, what I recall, and Sean, you might want to chime in here, is that there was no definite guarantee on any of the projects.
I understand that.
Sean can talk more probably to it than I could.
Sorry, I'm not sure I'm understanding exactly what the question is.
Okay, so Sean, I asked for all the new development projects from Steve Powers. He listed those on there. He listed the projects, possibilities of getting online, who's involved and so on and so forth. But I'm looking for numbers. If they were, again, what are the, what are the costs for hookup on the city's part? What are the revenues for hooking up the city, the, the new applicant to the city, for how many units they have? I'm trying to turn this into, what is, what are we looking at? I understand where we're at with the facility and, and the different options. I'm looking out in front. I'm looking at where we're at with the Navy, I'm looking at with new projects. I want to know numbers of what it's going to cost us, the city of Oak Harbor, and what are our potential possible revenues?
Okay.
Am I, am I, am I clarifying that? I understand that something may be dead in the water due to financial or whatever. Now with COVID-19, who knows what may happen, but they are on the books with the city and what, where are we at and what do we potentially come out? Are we going to be in the green or are we going to be in the red with all of this? Whether it's the Hillside project, whether it's Gary Oaks project, but I want to see dollars on those and as far as, as close as we can get with the Navy as well.
Totally. I understand what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So that's something, I'll, I'll work back with staff on that. I'm, I'm not aware of the cost of hooking them up, but we'll work on something for that.
We have a master rate schedule, just go by the schedule that we're going to charge anybody. This is what we're putting out in front, this is what's onboard. I got the permit reports today, I looked at those numbers. I'm looking at dollars and cents for the city of Oak Harbor, both in costs, both in revenues. Whether it's this year, next year or three years down the road. What can we obtain? And if there's any blockage in that, I, I want to see what, where the hangups are with these projects and so on and so forth. Okay, I appreciate your effort in that department.
As far as the Navy goes, Blaine, you're going to have to weigh in on that one. That isn't something that I could provide and I'm not sure, I think Blaine needs to answer that. I think Blaine needs to answer that.
Yeah, speaking to the Navy issue, until we get a better proposal, knowing what it is and how we connect to them, it's hard to predict what that's going to do with, with the rates. And I think even if we do get some agreement with them in the next month or so, conceptually wise, the connection is going to be probably two years off at a best scenario and I think Kathy kind of reiterated that and that's kind of where the Navy is. The other issue regarding the growth, now I kind of remember Steve's comments on there and I have CAC here and I'm going to try to give it a, a go summary. I think what Steve was talking about, we probably have 400 to 500 homes that are in the approval stage right now, but trying to guess the timing on it. And I believe we did build some growth in there, I think it was a half percent. If I remember right, Sean, you can probably verify, it looks like Patricia's waving her head, so I think I got that one right, is what we did. But knowing what's that going to do, I mean, it could move, some of it's dependent upon the property owners and the, the development and so, and some of those projects like Gary Oaks has been a long-term coming and still has some hurdles to go through on their end to get that one going. Scenic Heights is a smaller one and so we have the apartment complex, it's 60 units, that, that one's going along really fast. The one on Hillside has gone through a lot of approval process and that one's 188 homes. So there's a lot out there, we're trying to work through. Some of it's on their end, some of it's on our end on the timing. I think on our end, we're trying to push things through as fast as we can on the approval process. So it was hard to, I think what you're probably looking for is a little bit more aggressive on the growth rate. I think we were kind of hesitant on that. I think we could probably give several scenarios on it, Sean. I think you could probably say, what is it at 1% instead of half percent? What is it at 2%? I think Sean might, once we kind of figure out that, can, can do that because if these homes, these 500 homes go really quickly, I think definitely we're going to see more than just the half percent we did. And so, and that does help because, especially with the treatment plant, clean water facility, that's more customers that are paying into that debt service. And so certainly that would help the, the rate and the debt service is fixed. So the more customers you go on. So with that, I'll kind of see if Kathy or CAC, I believe is out there too, if either one of you want to, or both of you want to speak to this a little bit more detail. I thought I had CAC here. He's not here? Okay.
I think CAC would be the best to talk about growth. So I don't really have anything else to add on that.
Okay, he's, I thought he was here, but he's not here now. So I did my best to kind of...
Okay, Blaine?
Yeah.
All due respect, I, I still don't think I'm making myself understood. It's not that difficult. Okay, let's go through it. One, two, three. Apologize for taking up time here. Look at the, what Steve Powers put together on that slideshow dated 3/23/20. In there you have the projects. What I'm looking for is what is each permit worth, okay? What is each hookup worth based on the project, based on what are the anticipated revenues for the clean water facility per project, per unit? Just based on our rate fee schedule. Do the math all the way through the projects. That's what I'm asking staff to do, based on what Steve Powers produced. I can look at a line item and tell you if, knowing who the applicant is, if it's going to get up and get going. If I don't, I just subtract that. And then I can estimate how far out that project might be. I'm looking for all the numbers from the staff for each project, for each item, what the revenue is for the city. Now, what's it going to cost us to put in a new line? That has to be on the expense side. I don't want percentages, I want dollars. Or estimated dollars, but we have a master fee schedule. I'm trying to turn this into a business situation instead of a 1% growth, a half a percent growth. Is it worth a half a million? Is it worth 10 million? And then it's going to cost us 50% of that. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, hey, can I, yeah, this, this is Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I hear what you're saying and I, and I, we do have those, certainly have those individual projects, their proposed number of lots, and I, I hear what you're asking for and I think, you know, we can get that. So...
I do too.
Yeah, so just let us, it's going to take us a little more time, but yeah, we certainly have those. So thank you very much. Any other, any other questions about, at this time, Counselor Mack?
None at this time, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Servadius?
Thank you. So a couple of, several thoughts. I'm looking at an email that Patricia, you sent to us on 3/25 and it has a lot of the breakdowns and the different capital improvement changes specifically for water and stormwater. And I'm just trying to scan this as I look at the different options. Can you tell me, I have no problem necessarily shifting some of these capital improvements a little bit. Obviously, as a city, as a state, as a country, things are moving very slow at the moment. And so if we have to shift some of these a little bit to the right on a timeline, I'm okay with that. I do get concerned when we talk about deleting projects. If it was a project that was on there, it was probably somewhat important. So can you tell me, I'm only seeing, or maybe it's Kathy, whoever wants to answer it, I only saw one of these as I'm trying to scan through these PDFs. It looks like it's a deletion of a cross-city transmission main.
Yes.
What are we deleting?
Kathy, could you?
So that project was in our water system plan for quite some time after we built the north reservoir. It's, our water system is functioning better than we had anticipated and so that project is really not needed for, for city purposes for quite some time. Now, I don't know if you remember, several years ago, the Navy asked us for a proposal to, to do that cross-city transmission main because they have some issues that may need addressed and replacement of some of their lines and fire flow out in the Crescent Harbor area. Most of the cost of that project would have had to have been borne by the Navy because the city received very little benefit from it after we built our north reservoir. And so the Navy kind of put that project on hold. I don't know that it's ever going to move forward. So we have taken that project off the list because it's not needed for the city. If the Navy comes back and asks us to reconsider that at some point, then we'll put it back in, but the majority of the cost would be borne by the Navy.
So other than shifting some of the timelines, is there anything then in stormwater also that we've deleted? I'm not, without turning my laptop sideways, I'm not seeing any deleted from stormwater?
No, there was nothing deleted.
The, the only project that was deleted was that big city transmission main, which was over $3 million in water.
Okay. And so, you know, I, I appreciate and I hear where Mr. Mack's coming from as far as just dollars and cents revenue projections. I'm hesitant in this economy. I'm looking at, in the same email you had on here, it talked about 550, 557, not you, but whoever put this together, 557 residential units in progress. And I'm pretty leery to be overly optimistic on too many of those. I think at any point in time, you know, you could, you could create numbers that say there's X number of projects. Somehow we need some kind of a metric that has a high likelihood of, you know, 90% or greater of starting in the next 12 months. So I too want to try and analyze that data, but at the same time, I think we need to rely on some kind of a, a percent just because that's what we've traditionally done. I'm going to use the term anemic. I think a half a percent growth is not, not really that great of a growth rate. But if that's what we've traditionally done, then let's look at a couple of metrics that maybe have a half a percent, 1%. And I don't know what all 557 of those units would do to our, you know, if that would equate to one and a half or a 2% growth rate. So I think at some, to some degree, we need to use percentages because I don't, I don't want to put a lot of stock in any one of these projects springing online immediately, although I wish they all would. And the last point I would make is, as much as I want to work with the Navy and make sure, I, I don't think there's anything more important right now as far as helping our ratepayers than trying to come to an agreement with the Navy. I think that's probably the most important thing we could do to help share this cost burden, if you will. Having said that though, I don't anticipate, I think it was Mr. Olborne's words or somebody's words, that probably that isn't realistic within the next 24 months. We may come to an agreement, but to get that stood up, the infrastructure in place and to bring that all online is certainly two or three years out in the future, probably at the soonest. So I don't really want to train, calculate any hope on the Navy's side in our immediate near-term rates. If they come onboard, then I would hope that we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars and we've negotiated a situation where it can improve our citizens' utility rates. But I don't know that we count on them now, nor do we necessarily count on 500-plus homes springing online in the next 12 to 24 months as far as factoring into the rates. That's just being realistic. But it doesn't hurt, I think the point Mr. Mack was really driving home was, let's look at what these projects can generate, let's look at what it costs to put them in and, you know, try and really work and help those folks that are maybe closer. I, I don't know how we triage these projects, but let's try and get those online that may have a more likelihood, near-term likelihood of success. So that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Servadius. Other, Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. So a few thoughts on this. The, the first being whether we're looking at a half a percent growth or even if we triple that at one and a half percent growth. At this point, we, we can't determine that and the effect on rates would, would be pretty minimal. And it's, it's an unknown. We have to deal with, with the known. We have to make a decision moving forward. We had rates proposed to us, we asked city staff to look at what we could do to, to pare those down and, and they've given us some options and they've given us some hard facts and figures to look at and we, I think it's, it's our job to take a look at what we do have and make that decision moving forward. As far as the, the Navy goes, I've also had conversations with Mr. Olborne about the, the discussions moving forward and those may take some time, it may not even come to fruition. So again, that's an unknown that we as a council, we are going to do everything that we can to ensure that those negotiations end up with an agreement that not only does not cost our ratepayers, but hopefully will help defray some of the, the rate increases that, that are proposed moving forward. But for our discussion right now, that's something that when and if it happens, we can look at what the effective rates will be moving forward from that point. There is, there's a going to be, there will be a lot of time between now and There is, there's a going to be, there will be a lot of time between now and then. With what we have here, option two, as far as I can see, looks like our best option. The changes in the CIP are reasonable with the exception of the one project, which doesn't look like it was necessary, was going to happen anyway, have been deferred. Option two also takes out the interpreter center. At this point in time, when we don't know what the effect of this virus is going to have on the city's revenues, when we know the effect that it's having on our families and our community and our ratepayers right now, and that is a detrimental effect. The interpreter center at this point, to me, seems like a vanity project that we cannot afford to move forward with at this time. And we shouldn't expect our ratepayers to help us foot the bill for that type of project. So I understand there are some valid questions moving forward, but we have to, we have to make a move. And so I recommend that as we look to make some decisions, we've done all we can to get some pretty viable options in front of us. And as far as I'm concerned, my support at this point will be for option two moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Larson. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. Until someone hooks up and they can flush the toilet, I'm sorry, you just, I think Heights Corner, Highway 20, those blue condos in there. An empty, you know, top of a garage and they've never, it's probably been, what, about eight years now? So we don't know if they'll, that's just it. You never know what happens to the builder, to whatever, until they are online, we can't count them. That is very, very interesting. But it's going to be lucky. I think it's going to be more like five years beside, before they, and then all of this. So you can't even count those numbers online. And I think Councilman Servadias had a point, 500 is the difference in our rates. We have to go with what we know, what, and, and what has to be done. And we, we've got to cover our debts. Now, if someone lost a job or there's a problem, I would hope they would call the city and then ask. I don't want to see blanket, hey, everybody, we're going to lower this. Because what's happened, it's in some of the recent reports, people that are getting, are making $10 more an hour, they don't want to go back to work. So, because they're getting, so we need to be very careful with our rates, but we deal with them. I think the city has a good ear and they're after to gouge anyone or whatever. We're all going to be paying, I know that they have worked out problems in the past. Do a blanket, hey, we're going to give this much off just because. But we can't keep kicking the road. The, I don't like that spike if we, and then next year it's, the spike looks like it quad, I'd like to keep it as even as possible. So there isn't any, I can see where the interpreter center that actually building will probably have to go away. Maybe we can find some grant money, I don't know. Make sure that if we're putting off projects, there's an immersion. We've got money somewhere to be able to. And I think Ms. Rosen would know her, Patricia would know their account better than anyone. But we can't leave there just because we want to try to keep the rates down. Broke, and I don't want anybody to lose their job either. But we've got to, and as level as we can. I, I like the options. F has gone the extra mile. But until someone hooks up home and they flush that toilet, you can't count on those rates there. There's, I've seen too many projects in the 12 years that they get half-built or a third-built. And that revenue you, you just, you can see it, but don't. It's in your hand right now is what you need to plan on. And we, it's about it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilor Wessinger?
Thank you. And I too, I prefer option two. That would be my recommendation moving forward. Also, I, regarding the Navy and future growth, I agree that it's not something we can count now in our rate study. My question is, going forward though, let's, you know, give it two years, three years, when we see hopefully a lot of this growth and connection. And is that, Sean, do you have, how, how does your contracts work? And how do we adjust the rates? How would we go back? And obviously, this is a really big rate study right now. We had a lot going on, but in the future, how does that work?
So what we've done in the past as part of this is when we've had big changes, and I'll go back to probably about four or five years ago when Anacortes changed their water rates, then we came back and brought back to the council, here's what those adjustments were. And so at that point, you know, I think either we continue with the contract I have or the city asks for additional services and will amend that contract to move that. But we've always kind of worked through that process. When there's been a major change, we'll update that. So similarly, I'll, you know, if, if we have a lot of growth over the next two years or the Navy connects, then that's obviously something we could come back and I think connect or update those numbers and put that new projection forward or outline what, what alternatives the council has to adjust rates at that point.
And I can also say from the city's side, if there were any major changes, we would have to re-contract with Sean. His contract ends at the end of the year. And we would have to re-contract with him, but that would be our first step to make sure. He then came in and drew new data from us, new, what the connections were at that point. And we do all the background work to get him what he needed to do the rate study.
Okay, thank, thank you. And again, right now, looking at all the information, option two would be one that I would support of our given options. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wessinger. Councilor Mack, again?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, again, so just a follow-up and just to clarify for everybody who's on board. Mayor, city administrator, Mayor Protam, and the remainder rest of the council. I understand all these options. I'm ready to vote tonight if I had to. I understand. I don't run my business on anticipated revenue. I run my business on what's in the bank and what you currently have in your hand. With that being said, I'm also fortunate enough and have been fortunate enough to look out in front and to see where possible new revenue can come from instead of looking at either raising taxes or making increases on something that yes, is already here and that possibly that could have been done differently in the past. So again, I understand all the situation here with, with we have to make a decision and I'm ready to make a decision. However, I still want the questions answered and I think it's prudent for the council to have all those numbers. So you can go back and I can go down at each one of those applicants and I have a pretty good idea of who's financially set, who's not financially set, and who's going to move forward and who isn't. I can do all the math on that and always have been. So again, let's just be cautious. There's some other areas I still want to talk about for revenues for the city, but I'm looking at all angles when it comes to the different finances here of looking at new money versus keeping the rates at where people can afford it. And, but yes, we're going to see some increases, I understand that. But let's just not close the door to future options with revenue. So I appreciate your guys' patience with all that and I'm sure the staff hears me and they're going to come back with specific numbers based on our rate fee schedules and get us something. And it's just information we have on hand in addition to all of this other information that we have on hand. So thank you again, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Mack. Mayor Protam?
Thank, Kathy and Patricia, I really, it happened. But if Anacortes suddenly has, or something in the water, they're going to say, okay. It's usually not very many months, maybe one, two, three. Then we have to adjust all the rates because we can't hide for a year or five. I mean, it's got to be a pretty, has to be pretty close to when it happens to us that we have to pass it on to our payers, isn't it? By law?
Excuse me, yes. But I believe Anacortes has, has recently completed a rate analysis and it doesn't look like they're proposing any increases for us for a few years.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you for that. Any other questions or input at this time?
Mayor, could I get some clarification?
Yes.
So what I'm hearing council say is that we can bring back option two for a three-year rate increase? Is that what we're looking at or a five-year? We initially proposed a three-year to give time for potential changes. Or do you want us to come back with a five-year?
So I guess that's the question. When will this come back? And will it be three years or five years? Is that correct?
Yes, and I can bring it back whenever you would like me to bring it back.
How about input on that, council? Any particular feelings about that? Councilor Servadias?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things I realized I didn't really weigh in when I was talking, but I, I'm leaning towards option two. As far as three to five years, how much does it? I don't want to go too far out, but I also want to be able to, I mean, three years takes us basically through our next budget cycle and that's it. Five years would take us through our next roughly two budget cycles as we gear up. What does it take to stand up the whole HDR or other firm, that whole mechanism?
There's a, Sean, it's about two to three-month process to get you what you need and you to do what you need to do, correct?
Correct.
And how about a dollar amount?
I, I think what we've done in the past ballpark when we've updated these, if we've updated all four of them, full update, all the, the details, like all the customer numbers for all four utilities, I think it's been around 30,000. For these little updates, it's been much less than that.
So I, I guess I was thinking if we were going to go out five years, hopefully that would justify a larger cost savings. Not that I want to spend any extra dollars. But I guess I'd be okay with the three-year timeframe as much as there is going on with building, with the Navy. I thought we'd save more money if we locked in a longer term with the rates, but that doesn't sound like it's that outlandish. So I'd probably lean towards the three-year, thank you.
Councilor Wessinger?
Yeah, I wasn't prepared either for the three to five-year, you know, weighing. I can see the benefits both ways, I guess. You know, five years is, is like you said, two budget cycles. It at least provides a stable, you know, knowing what the rates are for the five years, you know. But I, we are in a climate that could change with the Navy with, with some growth that I, I do hope all of those continue. But we're also in a climate right now that we know where things may not go so well. And so, you know, I can see where three years would be. You know, makes sense as well for, for those reasons. But I, yeah, I may be missing something, but right now I'm, I'm sort of okay with either one. I maybe need some more guidance on what you, what you guys think are the benefits and pros and cons of each way. If Patricia or Sean has any more input on what something that I might not be thinking of would benefit or, or be potentially bad for either way. I would appreciate that, thank you.
I can weigh in and then Sean, if you will. So the reason we went with, our idea initially was three-year, Kathy, you can weigh in too, was it is uncertain times. We don't know, before COVID-19, there was a significant amount of growth happening. And as we know, we're hoping that we can get into negotiations with the Navy. Both of those could be finalized within the next two to three years. We could always do five and then just open them up before the five years are. But I just thought that was a safer way and it would allow for weigh-in by council before we go into the next, hopefully a five-year term at that point.
Yeah, and I would just add that that's something we talked about when we completed the last full rate study is where we actually were looking at over three to five years as well. We did the five-year, but the council also asked to have a schedule out there for a longer time period so that your customers knew what the projections were going to be. And that's the biggest thing I see between the two. Either one ties to your budgeting process nicely. A three-year does give you a little more time or gives you some time to readjust without having to have a specific rate schedule out there for five years that then you have to come back and adjust. That would be the only disadvantage, I would say, between the two. I think either of the choices is reasonable.
And Sean, just to kind of follow up, if we're doing the five-year, we're, we're really not smoothing it over, are we? So you're just going with what you got on page 57. So I mean, that could be a direction, but we didn't really build it that way where we smelled, we, we're really smoothing this over a three-year period is what you, you kind of built the scenario on and just gave year four and year five.
That, that's correct. We were, we developed this to meet the needs over the next full five years, but the focus was on the next three years based on what we had talked about internally as part of that. But those five-year rates are good. They reflect the capital and operating costs that we've built into the analysis.
Anyone else? Councilor Mack?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In light of everything that's happening and the uncertainty ahead, I can support option two. I'm also support Councilman Servadias on a three-year. I think it's important with not knowing in the future. I think it makes good business sense. But at the same time, we choose the shorter option. If we choose that shorter option, we can always, I think the constituents, the ratepayers will understand a shorter-term policy based on the unknown or short-term rate increases. But at the same time, we can always hold those five-year projections and use those as a guideline, both for us and the ratepayers to see that they are reducing because as years go by, they are showing they're reducing. So again, that's my stance and I appreciate Patricia and the staff for, Sean, your efforts in putting all this together. Thank you.
Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this short because I'm not bringing anything new to the table. We've already talked about it. It's nice to have the five-year projections so that we can see what the plan is. But with the shifting economic sands, it is prudent, I think, to go with the, the three-year plan. So I'm all for that, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I also, at this point, and the three-year would be the best. Sean's already about if someone, it's anticipated. But I think that with our budget planning and not knowing what's happening, also that might be action point to have the Navy pay for our new rate study because it's going to, and they might pick up that bill for that because they're adding. So anyway, just, just throwing it out there, they may end up. Wishful thinking, so anyway.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
It's worth a try.
Any other questions or input on that at this time? So I guess we didn't, we didn't make a decision on when we're bringing it back?
Yeah, Patricia, you need any more input?
Nope, I can bring it back to the first workshop in May if we need to. Or were we going back to two?
we going back to two meetings a month that month?
No.
No, just one in May.
Okay, well, I can bring it to the May workshop.
Yeah, as an action item.
Yep.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Okay, so that'll be the plan then. May workshop as an action item. Any other questions or input at this time?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patricia and Sean and Kathy, everyone. City Administrator Report?
Yeah, just, it's my pleasure to, I didn't reach all the council members, but that was my goal. I reached out to four of the seven, got a little, a lot of good input, a lot of good input on my report. I think I'm going to make this my monthly thing for a while here where I'll reach out to you before the workshop and kind of go over the administrative report. One other thing I mentioned to some of the council members is my report, by the time I get to, I have to do this a week in advance, so by the time I, I get to council, it's already obsolete. One of the areas that's obsolete is the economic development. I started working with the county on the Economic Recovery Task Force. We had our first meeting on Monday. Lot of exciting energy going to come out of that and, and moving forward and, and during the post-COVID-19 opening, it's going to be a little tricky as it opens up in phases. But certainly really good community import input there, island countywide input there with representatives from all the Main Street programs and from all the chambers there. A lot of good sharing of information how we do that. The county's new planning director, Jessica Carpenter's taking really an active lead and obviously has some experience in economic development. So it's real exciting there. She did provide some statistics that she was able to get on the retail side. That was kind of a year to date change from 19 to 20. Some of the statistics there that was interesting, not surprising. Lodging was down 70%. Restaurants was down 34% and groceries was up 66%. So that's kind of what we expected. People were instead of eating out, were, were, were buying groceries. So more to come on those. Those are really good indicators that we can kind of monitor the effect as we come out of that. I think kind of covered in the financial side with Patricia. It's really hard to know the effect of it. We're probably not as tourism based as a lot of other commodities other than the LTAC funding, but I think we're dealing with that. So we're not quite as affected by it. On the, moving on to my next item here, communications, certainly Sabrina provided a lot of great statistics on all the great focus that she's going on and a lot of good work there. So any questions there, you can contact me or her, but we'll continue to provide some key information. She gave some backup there of Facebook activities and such. And so just really exciting and great to have her on board and great to present a lot of the great things, good things that she's doing there. Developmental Services, I think I sent out an email on that. CAC, CAC is working as the interim director of Development Services. And then the Marina right now is reporting directly to me. Have to develop, have to decide, but I think the mayor and I are probably leaning towards making that a long-term issue and then just allow the new Development Services Director to focus on economic development and planning and building. And there's already a lot there. Finance side, I mentioned that we're monitoring the funding with COVID and we'll continue to look for key indicators in our economy. This is a great example of why we, we have a reserve. So the reserve is a reason when your income may go south, you don't have to move right away. So we have that luxury with the reserve, not having to, to move right away. Whereas some municipalities out there have no reserves and already have to start talking furloughs and those things, but we don't have to do that. I think certainly we're already kind of being conservative on the hiring side, being conservative on the spending side. So we've already kind of done that. And that kind of translates down to human resources there. I gave you all the vacant positions. A number of positions have went into delays because of the COVID issue, but that also helps us on the financial side. We'll continue to, as staff level, look at those and look which ones are essential and which ones are, are, can be held off on. And the same thing on the current vacancies that we haven't start, started doing. We'll continue to examine those. Moving on to the police department, I was made aware of, I had a typo on there. So the National Night Out was scheduled for August 4th and we haven't finalized it yet, I don't believe, but we're looking at changing that to October 6th. If we do that, we'll probably have to come back with a proposal because I think we have council meeting on October 6th, but more to come on that as that gets finalized. Certainly the Public Works Navy connection, a lot of discussions there. Certainly I'll be happy to talk to any of you one-on-one to kind of give you more detail on that. So right now they're just continuing to look at our rate study and, and to ask a lot of questions about our May 2019 proposal that was, I think, updated in, in June. So really the numbers haven't changed since June on that. So they're not on the negotiating side yet, but at some point they'll hopefully make us a counterproposal, something that's in the range. Right now, their initial proposal, I don't think they expected us to really go with that and, but they're, have to do some serious looking before they want to pay a lot of money on system development. But the fact that they're asking a lot of questions, I think is positive and means that they're positioning themselves. I think on the meeting side, we are skipping a week, but we're just going to start back up in April 30th and we're going to keep those days open all the way through the end of May. Appreciate Beth's husband and Beth being on board and providing some input. I think that's very helpful. Moving down to Public Works with reorganization, getting ready to finalize the reorganization with the leaving of, of our longtime employee there in, in the supervisor position there. I think I kind of had a half-baked idea and Kathy maybe not quite as half-baked as mine was, but I think the two of us had a really good meeting and, and are confident that we can come back with a very comprehensive proposal there. So I think we've, maybe the earliest we can get it in May. I didn't want to put a date on that because I just, with everything going on with COVID and stuff, but I think hopefully, we're, hopefully we can bring it back as early as, as May. So any other questions you have on my report?
Counselor Mack?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Blaine, as we spoke, pretty extensive. Like what I see, you've covered a lot of different things. As we spoke, one-on-one Blaine, this is for you and all the council to consider. Few of us are retailers. I'm concerned as to where we come out of this. I plan on opening up my business soon and I'm concerned about two things. One of them is, you talked about percentages off on our city part on estimated sales tax. Could you do some numbers, change those percentages into dollars, which each of those, what's the grocery worth, what's the small retail worth and what's motel and lodging? So, so let's see how far estimated income is going to be off or revenues versus percentages. Let's see dollars. I'm not sure where they were at last year or the year before. So that's something I'd like to request. Also, as I spoke to you, Blaine, and I'm sure I have not had a chance to talk to Councilman Servadesis with the chamber, I'm concerned that we have all this new social media. We have a new person that communicates with our citizens. We need to promote shop local. Now, I understand the legalities and stuff, the city can only do so much, but between Main Street, the chamber and their plan, and I'd be more than happy to share my business plan with, with Councilman Servadesis to, to really work in conjunction with the chamber in this Main Street as also the city should be promoting it at the same time. So those are my concerns. I'm open to some more suggestions and, but see if we can't get, keep that sales tax up for whatever purposes we want to spend it on and keep it going between now and the first of the year. So thank you for listening.
Yeah, Councilmember Mack, one of the things that came up in our first meeting, the shop local initiative, and one of the things we talked about is the mayor did write a letter to the governor asking for flexibility on LTAC. And LTAC has a 50, has to be 50 miles out before you can do it. And I think we really want to eliminate that restriction and so we can advertise and promote more locally on the tourism side and that will help us on the retail side too. So that's going to continue to be a major initiative of, of the task force. And certainly it really plays a, a role, what from that meeting is the role that the chamber and the Main Street programs make. They can do the one-on-one outreach. If they don't have enough resources, I think Mayor and I talked about it, we want to know what they need and see, and, and pretty much be a partner with them. But it's vital that we have them lead. Since we can't turn around and handpick people like they did, but certainly we're already hooked up on the promotion side and our, our communication PIO already has some initiatives along with the chamber. And we'll certainly work to hand-in-hand on them and increase our visibility and our promotion. And just had some more talk on trying to get our Facebook to pop up more today. So we're looking at some initiatives there. We've been increasing our activity. Some of the mayor's messages can go out more and, and so people see a lot of things. And so we've kind of are, continue to look at initiatives and look at ways that we can continue to, to improve on the communication side. I think we made a lot of progress, but absolutely we have more to do.
Thank you, Administrator O'Bourn, and I'm looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Counselor Servadesis?
Just for clarification, I'm guessing why Mr. Mack kept saying he wanted to share his ideas with me. I'm serving as the, currently serving as the president, but I'm sure he's happy to share his ideas with all of you as well.
Thank you, Counselor Servadesis. Anyone else? Mayor Protim?
Thank you, sir. On your reorganization, I am really concerned that I have not priced out through finance. Some of these reclassifications cost money. And are they presently in the budget? When we've had lean years, Kathy and Good, there were a lot of people that ended up being cross-trained. Innocents were splitting their time and doing two jobs at once or what. But some of these are reclassified promotion, reclassified, sorry, but as much as I'd like to give everybody a raise, we can't any cost out in our budget and that would come. And I think that is very, very necessary before we can approve to be permanent. Also for Servade, I'm not sure how long you're looking out for that, but I think that needs to competition to see who would actually promote somebody from one end. It's nice that we have someone talented like, and he may end up being the winner, but I can't see doing that for a whole. Think we need to give time, see how the economy, how we're coming back, the position for a department head that we need to open up for, just promote from within on that. And other than that, that's just the biggest thing is this reorgan, much about it. We've seen some names, sounds good. Temporary is it, but before we can guarantee them that position, you know, if we have it in our budget. That's it. Thank you.
And thank you. I think we talked about that and Kathy Visberry made some good suggestions on that area. We'll have components of it and we'll have some of it that's going to be in the budget process and the short, some of it's short-term and some of it's long-term. So I think we'll, we'll be able to address your concerns there.
Okay, anyone else on the City Administrator Report? Okay, we're getting, we're a little past seven, but I, I wanted to close by saying that the Navy negotiation process has been, has, has taken place now the last three Thursdays for two hours, telephone meetings, and they are discussions with the, with the Navy up until and probably through the 30th. I anticipate that we'll start negotiating before long after that. I would hope so. It is one of our highest priorities. It is like a highest priority for city staff, believe me. It is hugely important to me and, and I think to our citizens. So it's not something I'm taking lightly. I know that we've got a couple of counselors that have expressed an interest. I have told the Navy negotiating team that I will be adding a couple of people from our city council. So if you are interested, these meetings are from 10 until, or from nine?
Meeting, so it's basically nine to noon on Thursday.
Okay, basically from nine to noon on Thursdays. They will be through the month of May and I anticipate that at, at some point we'll be starting the actual negotiation. What I will do is send you an email of the, the people involved. Make sure everybody on council gets that. In fact, I'll ask Mr. O'Bourn and his staff to do that. We've got a, a good listing of who has been in those discussions to date and, and they're going reasonably well. Director Rosen has warned me over and over that that's a long, arduous process and I'm, I'm coming to realize it more than ever. And so I would appreciate your interest if you are interested to let me know. And then it won't be too long, we'll be bringing a couple of counselors into that meeting. There are seven or eight people from the NAS, not just NAS Whidby. There's only one from NAS Whidby, a couple from their regional Northwest, four from Washington DC. And I think that's it from the Navy side. Actually, Commanding Officer Arnie was, attended the first meeting. I have been listening to all the meetings thus far. And again, I think we're going to start negotiating before long. I sure hope so. That would be my plan. And so I'll be bringing some, a couple of counselors on. So please let me know if you're interested. And I, I have gotten a couple of interested, but I'd just like to know who is and, and wanted you to know the commitment. So any questions about that at this point? Okay. If there are none, I want to thank you, well, oh, Counselor Servadesis?
Are you going, I had you have a comment on that, but are you going to do council member comments as well? We have there at the end of the agenda?
Uh, yeah, sure. I am going to do that. Yeah.
It'll hold if you have more than?
Uh, no, I don't think I have anymore really at this point, other than the, the COVID concerns ongoing and, and just to our citizens that, that. Thank you so much for your resiliency and your understanding. So now we'll go to counselor comments. Counselor Servadesis?
Thank you. So just wanted to say, I know I had expressed an interest in being involved in those negotiations. I would just ask Mayor, whoever that is, whatever two council members that is, that they get involved as soon as possible, even if they're just talks or, I don't know what you're calling them besides talks at this point, just for clarification as far as terminology, nomenclature, history, all of that is very important to get up to speed on to make the negotiations that much more effective. So whomever that is, please get them involved as soon as possible. And I would just like to close by saying I really miss you guys. Look forward to sitting around the dice again soon in person. And we've gotten quite good at this and especially you, Mayor. You, this was by far the best meeting we've ran. I know watching for that little blue hand to pop up can be difficult. You did an excellent job of making this seem like a fairly fluid, actually a very fluid virtual meeting. So good job and thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Servadesis, and thank you. Thank you, Counselor Cervades, and thank you Carla for catching all the hands. So I think with that, uh, oh, Counselor Mack?
Yeah, we have to thank our team in the background here you don't see on screen. They, they really helped a lot.
Okay, Counselor Mack?
Yes, uh, uh, I just would like to put out there, reiterate, uh, Councilman Cervades, um, for all of this, uh, electronic stuff and, uh, uh, everybody's doing a great job. All the people in the background you never hear about and, uh, uh, especially for you, Mayor. Um, you got to have some patience, uh, dealing with everything and watching all those hands. And so, uh, in addition to that, I want to thank you for your due diligence on all this Navy negotiation. It's not easy and you got it, and you're doing a good job. Just stay in there, hang in there, maintain. Uh, and I know we will come out on top. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Uh, Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. I also, besides, um, Blaine O'Bourn, uh, he took the time to, I believe, call or try to get ahold of all the council members reaching us up to date. Um, with what's happening with them. I wonder if, uh, his department's going to start reading stories like some of the other police on King Five News, you know, they have favorite book. Uh, I saw the staff sign holding today. Facebook page and it was very clever, lots of smiles and I hope the public will view it. Uh, it's very clever. Participating on that and I'll just do a plug. Um, the numbers are starting to come up. I am on their Board of Directors and this Friday going to provide some, uh, transportation and muscle for to ask it to a subsidized senior housing for us. Be welcome because we only have five staff members and they're running pretty rag. Uh, but anyway, if you have a dollar you want to contribute or five or whatever, they can sure use it. Um, I think in the next few months, we're really good. Please remember your neighbor and, uh, everybody, I'll be glad to sit next to you sometime. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I think with that, uh, we'll adjourn. So, thank you all for your time. See ya.